Good evening, welcome to the November 12th workshop meeting of Pasco County City Council. We have agendas available in the corner desk over here if you'd like to follow along. Or a more detailed council package is also available online through the city's website. We also televise our meetings live on Charter Cable as well as through the city's website and is also also on Facebook. If you get a chance to speak with council, if you come to the podium up here and you share your name with us, we'd be grateful for our record keeping. And I also ask if you have any cellphone to please silence it so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And with housekeeping taken care of and noting that Mr. Maloney is absent this evening, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Brajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Serrano.
Yep.
Watkins.
Here. And I'm gonna ask, would Chief Rosky like to lead us in the plegacy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I also asked for that because I'd like to, with council's indulgence, do a little bit of a drop-in because we have a special occasion this evening led by Captain Rosky and also involved, I still do it, Chief Rosky. And also the Police Department this evening, good to see you and everybody this evening.
Thank you Mayor Watkins, council members and the public. It's a great honor tonight for us at the Police Department as we retire one of our long-tenured Police Canines, Canine Lemon. A quick history on Lemon, he's a ten-year-old German Shepherd. He spent eight years protecting the city of Pasco. He's a cross-trained dog, which means that he not only searches for for physical evidence and bad guys, people actually hiding from us, as well as narcotics, he's a narcotics-trained dog. In Lemon's career, he's found over seventy hiding criminals that they declared to be dangerous. Those ranged anywhere from people that were hiding waiting to jump or ambush officers to people armed and hiding from us. And obviously, the safety that that the dog brings as he's leading those searches for people that either would have been a much more dangerous outcome, or maybe we wouldn't have found them at all and we would have still had criminals out there. In addition to that, Canine Lemon's found over eighty-one pounds of illegal narcotics in his career. And I don't, I didn't have the number of the of the dollars that he seized. So it's important that we that we honor Lemon as he's finding his way out. We'll be replacing him in the spring. The other thing to note about Lemon is he was our first dog that we had to make notoriety with social media as we launched social media. Canine Lemon, known as hashtag Canine Lemon, is a national phenomenon across the country and has, oh yeah, across the nation and has national attention and a following of of people across the country. So hashtag Canine Lemon helped make his mark and helped make Pasco brighter in the eyes of a lot of people across the country as social media found its way. And then in closing, I just think it's important that council has a little perspective of the what we call the the dummy at the end of the lead. Not quite so dummy. Not quite so dummy. Handler, Canine handler Officer Josh Lemon is a ten-year veteran of the Police Department. He's on the SWAT team, he's a crisis negotiator. And I'm gonna try and just summarize all of his special certifications when it comes to Canine. But he's a straight state trainer and evaluator in both patrol and narcotics. And he has a whole litany of certifications that go along with that. So we tease the guys, and you'll see some of the other handlers in the audience, about just holding the end of the leash, but they're very skilled and highly trained at at what they do. So with Lot, Canine Lemon has his other family, which he'll be retiring to, in the audience with us. And I just wanna thank you. Any questions for me?
I, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you. I was just texting right now because my daughter-in-law is the teacher where Lemon has been in and done some presentations. And she says she loves Lemon and she doesn't want to see him go and hopes to see him again before he actually goes. But anyway, I wanna thank the officer and the Canine Dog for all the good things. And just wanna say good wishes and hope he has many more years.
And Chief, I'm not sure of the protocol. Is there something that we can do to 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 honor Lemon and the handler and the and the Police Department in some way? What's what's the, is there a traditional, traditional thing?
No, we we haven't had a lot of the, a lot of the dogs usually get ill and don't make it through retirement. So this is, we have had some, so this is new for us. And that's why we're so pleased to actually have Lemon work a full career. When they start hitting age eight, they start aging quickly. Lemon held that off for a couple of extra years till he's ten. But why don't I work with the city manager and and staff and we'll come up with with appropriate recognition?
Just as I've thought of other long-serving people in the community, I think it'd be appropriate for us to all give a standing, give a round of applause.
Perfect, thank you very much.
That's a special treat. Item three, verbal reports from council members. Anybody attend a meeting or event they wish to share with council? Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just very quickly wanna say that I attended the fiftieth anniversary celebration of Visit Tri-Cities Annual Meeting. And I will tell you that Mr. Michael Novakovich is quite the entertainer and doing a wonderful job in representing us as as the Tri-Cities, Quad Cities, if you will. He did a phenomenal job, it was a great meeting and our tourism is booming. One of the things that caught my attention was what, you know, if our tourism is wonderful, our community is wonderful. And it's just all a circle of what makes up a city. And and also what was, got my attention was the fact that this area is becoming one of the, what was, 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 what am I trying to say? It was recognized as the new wine country of of this area. And it's just phenomenal what they're doing and they did a wonderful job, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As as I'm sure many were, I was watching the the election very closely. And I'm excited for what the what the new year brings. And we'll have one new council member and looks like we'll be retaining one who's unable to join us tonight. But and of course, Mr. Alvarado had a had a rough lift, but it seems to have pulled through. There was a little bit of a squirrely moment there when we'd only had the write-ins showing up and it was looking that Mr. Alvarado was losing one to nothing. So congratulations to all the council members and council and and folks who just simply put their name out there. It's hard to run for office and it's a and it's a great show of community service for someone to step up and and be willing to put themselves in line like that. So kudos to everyone who ran but and look forward to serving with one new council member.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna turn back to what Mr. Martinez talked about as far as Visit Tri-Cities. In addition to their annual meeting, they also received a recognition. It's, the acronym is DMAP, designation of destination marketing accreditation program. And it took a lot of work. I sat in those meetings every month and Mr. Novakovich and staff would update us on all the things they had to do. He had a lot of classes that he personally had to attend. He had some shadowing, some, and then on the opposite side, some mentoring. It sounded like there were some papers, it kinda sounded like college for marketing. So I think we need to take, again, the pride that Mr. Martinez said in in this area becoming a true destination, but the pride that other members of our community are serving to as professionals to put us out there. So congrats to Visit Tri-Cities and their recognition. Again, congrats, it sounds like, on a wonderful annual meeting. So just, again, congrats to them, thank you.
Thank you. And I, this is not an usual report for me, but I wanted to mention that, so I've been on council for about sixteen years. One of the things I've always thought about is what it'd be like to visit all of the cities and towns in Washington State. And done a lot of them and I put my mind to it and figured out which ones I hadn't been to. And over the weekend, knocked off the last fifty. And so I've been, about Saturday evening when I got to La Crosse, Washington, there was city or town as recognized by the MSR, MRSC, all two-hundred-and-eighty-two cities and towns in Washington State. So I was pretty happy, it was a nice little fifteen-hour mile weekend to knock those last fifty off. But if you wanna quiz me later, if you were to ask me the most biggest surprise, Carbonato, Washington, you really gotta wanna go there. Although although I would say Mansfield, not to be confused confused with Manson, is is also one that's a bit of an obscure place, location, and Nuksek as well. So that's what I did this weekend. Any other reports? Hearing none. We're gonna go on to section four on the agenda for full section four. So our first one is an update related to the 2020 census. And I know that we have Ms. Luanne Ayers this evening to give us a reporting, any introductions, Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I, we're approaching crunch time on the 2020 census. And in addition to the city efforts on our own part, Dr. Ayers will brief council on the regional effort associated with getting out the complete count for this upcoming census, which is only four months away.
We're on the countdown.
Good to see you.
Council members, it's great to have this chance to learn more about what the city of Pasco, my city, is doing. I met with the Franklin County Commissioners this morning. So it's a great bookend day to talk about something that has such a significant impact on our community for the next decade. And if you don't mind, if I can have just a moment, there might be those in the audience and the listening audience who have, don't have the frame of reference that you have. In 2010, the city, the, excuse me, Franklin County had a thirty-one percent non-response rate. That meant for the last decade, Franklin County, of which the city of Pasco obviously is a part, received less than its fair share of federal money, state money, even private philanthropy because so many decisions are based on our census count. And so we have a real opportunity to change that equation. We have some things are stacked against us as a community. And that society has changed so much in the last decade. You just think about the level of trust in government and systems and how our society has changed. Concerns for privacy and cybersecurity have changed. And even the census itself has changed this time because the U.S. Department of the Census Bureau, excuse me, has less money to do the census than they did ten years ago. And yet our country is bigger and these changes have taken place. And the census is occurring during an election year, a presidential election year. So there'll be lots of noise and maybe angst in among the people and particularly those who might be from fragile families, maybe English is their second language, they live in rural areas. We have a high percentage in Franklin County of hard-to-count populations. And OFM has been doing projections on hard-to-count areas. We have all the markings to be up to forty percent undercounted. That's a lot of money, that's over $2,000 in federal money alone per year for the next decade that we won't get to address things like roads and bridges, particularly after the passage of this last election. We all need roads and bridges to be safe, we need progress in infrastructure, and that's federal and state money. Things that families care about are things like Head Start, free and reduced lunch and breakfast, public transportation, low-income housing, Medicare, Medicaid. All of those things receive funding based on census count. And so if we have less money, we will still have the same growth in population, but less access to it. So it's just really exciting that the city of Pasco is is taking a progressive stance to help educate their employees, to educate their citizens about why is the census important? Why should you take ten minutes to influence the next ten years when April rolls around and you receive your letter or postcard? Or what to do if you don't receive a letter and postcard? And what is safe, how can you feel safe in answering the census? We've already seen some illegal activities starting to sprout related to the census. So for example, about a month ago now, they started doing address canvassing. So trained census workers were validating where addresses are so they know where to send those letters and postcards. And at the same time, we had reports in this state of individuals with census ID, it wasn't real, going door-to-door with clipboards and asking questions which included the social security number. So we want people to really feel confident that they can answer and be safe doing so. And it is really important to their families, their businesses, their grandchildren. But also what's not real? And so voices of those in the audience, those who are listening, and certainly our elected officials and city staff can help them feel comfortable with, if it's an email, it's not real. If it is a phone call, it's not real. If they ask for your social security number, it's not real. Just simple things like that, so people can feel safe when they're answering. I would be delighted to answer more questions. We did have the official launch of the Benton Franklin County Complete Count Committee a week ago, last Monday. That's a unified cities, counties, ports, not-for-profits, space-based organizations and interested citizens to help us really kick-start the public awareness. We are about a year to two years behind other communities in doing this. And I I take that as an asset because I'm a glass-half-full person because other cities and counties and entities have been developing materials and doing research and having graphic design and and translated materials. And they're giving those informations out freely so we can leverage what they've done and use our limited resources to get them out to people. The United Way has stepped up to the plate. This is really part of our scope of work in that we track every year thirty-nine data points that measure the health and safety of people in Benton Franklin Counties. And this last August, in the update, the annual update, what we noticed is data related to children and youth and fragile families. In almost every case, we lost ground in one year. There are more hungry children, more housing insecure families. Even in our senior population, we had a six percent increase in seniors in poverty in just one year. So those are things that both private philanthropy through organizations like United Way, faith-based organizations and governmental entities altogether need to address. And the census has a huge impact on programs related to many of those data points. So we, on behalf of the bi-county area, applied for a state-of-Washington contract. Covers both counties, that's why it was probably an ugly duckling, no one entity wanted to apply for it. It's a state contract, which means lots of paperwork and it's a reimbursement basis. But we just, my board felt strongly enough about doing this that we were successful in getting a $250,000 contract to provide materials and to support some census education. And we're working with volunteer advisors from that Complete Count Committee to see how best to deploy that. For example, we have a part-time person who will be hired to work just in North Franklin County because of the fragile population, rural and limited English-speaking families in North Franklin County. And the same thing in West Benton County and Prosser. So those are just examples of how we're going to be deploying those funds. The state legislature set aside $15 million last year for census education and outreach across the state. They've let contracts for about the first half of that. So that's a start to what needs to be done. The letters will be, you'll be receiving those in the mail about the last week of March, first week of April. So that's the official kickoff is, pun intended, no foolin', it's April Fool's Day at Census Day. What question do council members have for me?
Mr. Maloney.
Thank you for the presentation and certainly all for trying to make sure that we get this right. As you say, the the long-term financial implications are staggering. We got, we actually received an email earlier from Gabriel Portugal with LULAC. Are you, or I believe in the past, we've seen more of a joint presentation with, between United Way and LULAC regarding kind of this census affiliation of organizations. Is that, is that sort of effort still going on?
It is. I'm the only one who is available tonight, so this is what you get. But certainly Gabriel and LULAC have been partners since the beginning of this conversation. And in fact, they have received some grant funds that supported the hiring of three interns, I call them interns, who have been working on census education. Their grant funds run out about the end, the first week of December. And they may be someone who could help us then with a leg up with the state funding as it comes through. So we work hand in hand. Certainly in Franklin County and in Benton County, we have a high level of individuals who speak Spanish. And so you'll be seeing some Spanish-language radio advertisements go out. But really, what's most effective is trusted messengers. Employers talking to employees, pastors talking and priests talking to their parishioners, elected officials talking to people that represent, neighbors and parents talking to their colleagues. That's really makes a difference. But we work hand in hand with LULAC and others.
Thank you. And just note too, this is one of those things that is specifically called out in the Constitution in Article One of the of the Constitution, an enumeration of all the people residing in the United States once every ten years. So it doesn't get much more simple than that for the actual counting part of it. And as you pointed out too, there, I think we've worked over the centuries to also use it for some other purposes. But at the most basic route, it's a fair and inaccurate account of all the people in the United States as of April 1, 2020. So all these things are gearing up for that, plus a few other things as well, obviously. But if if we were to distill that down, practically speaking, maybe it's been ten years. So I think you hit it on it just a little bit. People are gonna get a postcard or something in the mail asking people to fill out a fairly basic form to count the people in their in their residence. Is that, is that true?
Mayor, one of the things that has changed because of the lower level of funding is the Census Bureau is driving traffic to the website. So if you get something in the the mail, the first thing it will say is, go to this website. Ten minutes for ten years, about ten questions. And so website first. If you don't respond or if you don't have access to the internet, they will be sending out paper forms. Those are still going in. If people are uncomfortable answering a question, so perhaps they're uncomfortable with gender identity or ethnicity, incomplete application, incomplete answers are still counted. One of the questions we frequently get is, who should be counted? And my, I'm a simple farm girl, and so this is maybe an earthy response, but I say if your feet are on this dirt, you're counted. You deserve to be counted. Doesn't matter your age, your ethnicity, your citizenship status. If your feet are on this dirt, you deserve to be counted.
I appreciate that simple thing. And also, in my case, because I'm gonna be traveling, but still, of course, very much a resident of Pasco and my home on April 1, I'll be able to presumably use the internet instead of having a piece of mail forwarded to me that I have to mail back. So thank you personally, I think that's gonna help the census in my household.
One of the things we're working on is public locations, like libraries. Other locations may have a public kiosk. So people who don't have access to the internet or don't wanna use the minutes on their phone could go to that location, maybe some simple signage that would direct them to the appropriate website because we know that there'll be scam websites. And we wanna make sure that people, again, feel comfortable, it's convenient and safe to answer.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, just curious if there's been any engagement in like the simplest form of messaging for message effectiveness. So I'm curious about this Spanish messaging and, you know, if there's kind of some form of slogan or something like that. I think a lot of people, they know the census, but they don't really know, like, what to be looking out for. Is it an envelope, is it? So I'm wondering if there's something that, you know, has been, for for some folks, perhaps in other jurisdictions, has really stuck and people can connect to.
There's some great stuff out there. And as soon as we have have the funds from the state available, we'll be disseminating those and or providing them. For example, the city may want to have electronic versions that they can share out. We have toolkits are available. The U.S. Census Bureau has someone who speaks Spanish that they've hired in Walla Walla and Yakima. They're available to come to events, and so we're tapping into that network. Our sisters, I call them our sister city in Spokane. They're about a year and a half ahead of us. And so, for example, they've developed a whole website that they're just getting to us free. And they're working on translating that, they have less need of translating that in Spanish and Spokane. But Yakima has a lot of Spanish-language materials available. So we're just, again, it was launched a week ago Monday and are starting to roll that out, but are counting on partners to make the dissemination happen.
I'm sure we'd be able to help with that on our city's website, especially as April approaches.
Yeah, I'd love to see something very simple that everyone could just get behind and just that consistent messaging would be great.
Great. It's really, why, what is it? Why is it important? And how can you answer safely? Three simple steps. And how can we make sure that all languages can, and and even those who speak English, who might have some concerns or fears, that they, those are addressed.
Appreciate that. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
And April's not too many months away.
Right around the corner, we just have to get to a no-snow winter.
With that, we're gonna move on to our agenda. We go to section four B related to our 2020 legislative priorities. Mr. Zabel.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. This evening, we have Josh Weeks with us here. Josh has been, obviously, he works with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, our legislative liaisons. And he's done a masterful job the last year and a half, working on a number of issues for us. He's gonna walk us through what we might expect this coming session, including impacts from the initiative 976. And he'll help us hone our message. So without him, I'd turn over Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Good to see you all this evening, council. So last time I was here was, I believe it was in June, we were doing our end-of-session report and just reporting on what really was a very good session. So hoping to, looking forward to carrying through on that success into 2020. So what I'm gonna talk about tonight is what to expect during the 2020 legislative session, a little bit of context and political layout for you. And then also begin to talk about what we're proposing as your 2020 legislative agenda. So in terms of context, this upcoming session, you probably all know this, but it will be the sixty-day, the short legislative session. This last session was a hundred and five days. The purpose of this session will really be, rather than adopting their big biennial budgets, will be to amend those budgets in a supplemental budget form. We will, even though all of the bills from last year will still be alive and will be eligible for action this next year, we do expect to see thousands of bills again introduced this session. As typical, you know, hundreds of those could have the potential to impact city business. So one of the major things we obviously do is watch out for those things that have the potential negative or positive impact that the city wants us to take action on. In terms of the budgets, the operating budget, the actual revenue that they are bringing in for this biennium is above what they had forecasted. They're about $447 million actually above what they anticipated even getting when they wrote the budget. And then their forecasted revenues are also expected to be up. They're forecasted to be about $3.6 billion above for the next biennium, what they have in this current biennium. So that's a little less, it's a $53 billion budget, that's a little, somewhere around six-ish percent. I did that math in my head and I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician, so take it with a grain of salt. But the point is, they will have new revenue. It won't probably be all that much for them to do, much more than pay for increases in caseload, increases in costs going up for government, you're well aware of how that happens. That's typically what we see in the state operating budget. In the capital budget, last year, the capital budget is funded primarily, at least the projects that we care about for the most part are funded by bonds. Last year, they passed a bond authorization bill. There's about $70 million worth of bond capacity left. They will be appropriating that for additional projects. Keep in mind that that is also, most of that capital budget goes towards state projects, corrections, schools, those types of major state facilities. So there will be some funding, but not nearly as much as last session. And really, one of my major, major messages for you tonight is to keep your expectations low, particularly on the capital budget for this next session. Transportation budget, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, the passage of I-976 really does throw a different dynamic in what we thought the transportation budget conversation was going to be. If you recall from last year, the Senate Transportation Chair put out a proposed new revenue package to pay for new projects across the state. We didn't expect that to pass last session, last session, it actually got much further than we thought it did. We were really sort of anticipating that this next session would continue that conversation about a new connecting Washington-level, new revenue package. I, we don't think that'll be the case anymore. I think the conversation will much more be around with a reduction in revenue for the state. The estimates right now for just this next remainder of this biennium is about a 400, I think it's $80 million impact. Not all of that is gonna come out of the same pot, so not, there are gas tax revenues, there are also car tab revenues that are impacted. But the governor has put out a statement saying he's pausing all connecting Washington projects that haven't started construction. I think the the bottom line here is, there's a lot to go on this conversation. I think all session long, we'll be talking about what exactly they do with this. And hopefully, this is not an issue that pushes them beyond sixty days or carries over much further into other legislative sessions. What exactly they do with this, um and hopefully this is not an issue that pushes them beyond sixty days or carries over much further into other legislative sessions. But we don't know the answers right now, um I think we, I think it is reasonable to expect that. Any connecting Washington projects that have not started construction. Any projects that were appropriated last year, there were some new projects that received funding last year. Um and any new projects that that people are asking for, I think they all could potentially be put sort of in the same pool. For another uh repriorization conversation from the start. So we'll talk about how this uh has potential impact for the city specifically, but I would just say a great amount of uncertainty right now in the transportation realm. Politically speaking, the Democrats will continue to control the House, the Senate, and the Governor's Chamber, the major change. For us is the new Speaker of the House, we haven't had a new Speaker of the House in over twenty years. Um Representative Lori Jenkins is the Speaker designate, she will actually be voted into that position by the entire House. Uh at at the beginning of session in January, um but she has been elected by the Democrats and will take that position. Um we don't really know, I think the a lot of uh speculation about what this means. Um Representative Chop uh was a very, even though he was from one of the more liberal parts of Seattle, he was a very um. Measured politician, he very much wanted to make sure that the more liberal factions of his caucus didn't get too far ahead, so that they lost seats. Um we'll have to see how Representative Jenkins uh wields her power and what kind of control she has over her caucus. Um this is an election year, obviously, and that will have an impact on how people vote in the legislature. They will be looking forward towards their voting record and what they have to run on for the next session, this will be. All of the House members and about half of those in the Senate will be up for election. Uh the big news for you, obviously, is that um Senator Walsh from the sixteenth district is. Um retiring, she will not be running again, we know Representative Jenkins and Perry Dozier from Walla Walla are running for that seat. So you will, um obviously that will have impacts for you, you'll have a new House member at a minimum coming in and potentially a new Senate member, depending on how Representative Jenkins does. So within that context, our advice for you for your legislative agenda is to really keep it concise. Um it is a short session, they're not gonna have a lot of attention uh in a short time period. Um the mechanism that we continue to recommend and that you've used in the past is to have a separate legislative agenda document. As well as a support opposed monitor list. Um the agenda document is the one that we give to legislators and really advocate on and say, this is what we are hoping you will do for the city of Pasco. The support opposed monitor list is more of guidance to us as we see other bills and issues coming forward. Gives us a little bit of guidance on what you care about and how to react to some of those issues a little bit in advance, but. Um keeps your political capital a little bit um protected, really focused on those issues that are on the agenda for the most part. Um we ask you to keep in mind the political context and climate that we're we'll be working in. Um particularly on the size of the budgets this year, and then building on your previous successes, and and you'll see that in our recommendation. So jumping to that, and I should have said earlier, if you have questions, please feel free to interrupt me, you don't have to wait till the end. So we have a variety of items we're recommending on your agenda, and you should have in the packets, I know on the public agenda. That was posted, there's a copy of the draft legislative agenda document, there's also a copy of the draft support opposed list. Um my slides track along with the agenda. Uh we will be asking for additional transportation money for the Lewis Street Overpass, you're all well aware of this project. Um we have been working on filling a a lack of funding in that for a couple of sessions now. Um city's been very successful in identifying other sources. Um just within the last uh few months, you received um. Word from the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board, FIMCIV, that they would fill an additional four point four million dollars for the project, extremely good news. The catch on that is that that's just their recommendation, the legislature needs to approve that appropriation. Uh in their transportation budget, um this is an area where I think the city has a fair amount of um. Um we're gonna need to work this hard, given what's going on in the transportation budget, I would not assume that the legislature is just going to rubber stamp. What FIMCIV is advising this year. So having said that, this will be, we're recommending that this still is your main transportation request, and we really do think that the best defense is a good offense. And really talking to legislators about why this appropriation is so important, and the fact that it really does get the project across the line. On the capital side, we know that the process water reuse facility, this is a project that's a carryover, not just from last session, but we've talked to the legislature. And been successful with the legislature in the past on this project, continuing to work with them on it, we think is a is a positive thing, it's a positive project, has a lot of support. Um you are um about to be spending up to forty three million dollars in additional improvements to the facility. Um the expansion of the facility is something that the processors very much obviously support, they've made a significant financial contribution to it. We essentially would be asking the state to to be um not matching, but contributing to this project as well. The number we're looking at is five million dollars over the next four years, I will tell you that is extremely large request. Um and I do think that you will need to continue to have conversations about the phasing of that project and um. Uh how exactly we might be able to use those dollars, I see lots of looks going around, is there a? Question, okay?
Actually, Mr. Serrano?
Yeah, have we historically had the processors onboard writing letters of support or anything of that nature?
I know we did last year, I'm not sure prior sessions to that.
Yeah, we utilized them not only for legislative purposes, but also for uh grants and.
Okay.
Low interest loans, that type of thing.
Alright, just one of, you know, recognizing as one of your prior slides suggested political capital becomes extremely valuable this session. Uh let's use it where we can.
Yeah.
I I think I would add that, you know, that that is, and it is a big ask, five million dollars over four years, however, the processors are investing a lot of their dollars in there too. That forty three million is dollars that uh primarily be funded by the processors with a few grants.
We really are advising our clients that even if you don't think you're going to get funding this next session. The projects of this size to be talking about them early, you may not get it this session, but it does set you up for a a. Uh more successful conversation in the bigger biennial budget conversation in twenty twenty one, and to be thinking about this size of projects in those terms as well. Um the downtown revitalization project is tied into uh the Peanut Park um. Requests that we were successful with last year, but separate from that, we're now talking about um the corridors around Peanut Plaza. Um making the downtown more pedestrian friendly and um making it easier to walk around and just generally. Helping to enhance the downtown and encourage what we, what you already have been very successful at. Again, I think the two million is a pretty large number. Um and also just a reminder that um the process water facility is in the ninth legislative district, so we would be asking those legislators. Legislators to focus on that and um the downtown really, the focus of the sixteenth district. This is a new issue um that uh we have been talking with your staff about. Um it's the local option mental health sales tax. Franklin County and I should say all counties, but Franklin County specifically has the ability to impose uh one tenth percent sales tax. That can be used for chemical chemical dependency, mental health and therapeutic courts. But Franklin County has not utilized this local authority, um they've utilized several of their other local option sales taxes. But they have chosen not to use this one. We are basically suggesting that the city ask for that authority be transferred to the city, since the county has not utilized it. Um this has, there is precedent for this, cities in Pierce County have received this authority because. Uh because Pierce County had not utilized the authority, Tacoma has actually gone forward and imposed the tax. Um at your, the estimate right now is that with one tenth percent, you would raise about a half a million dollars a year. So it's a significant amount of money that you could use uh within city limits for these issues. The one, you know, thing to keep in mind, um similar to our conversation around the public facility district is if if you get this authority. I think the legislature will expect that you will take advantage of it. Um it is council manic, you do not need to go out to a vote of the people. Um so I would just keep that in mind when you think about um this option, it also obviously. Um I don't know, I have not had conversations with Franklin County, but I'm not quite sure how the commissioners will react to this. Um I think your biggest argument is that there is such a need in the city, and you really would raise a significant amount of the money. That Franklin County otherwise would raise, because they would not raise nearly as much in the unincorporated area.
Josh, is that a, what's the leg- the the vehicle to that, do we request legislation to authorize us to do so, or is that built into the prior legislation?
No, you would have to, we would have to run a bill that would specifically give you the authority to do so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
That be some food for thought, and you saw some saw some people thinking about this, and appreciate your insight and thoughts.
Yeah, for sure. Um finally, on the legislative agenda, we have a general support statement for uh economic development tools, we list off a number of options. All of which we know are going to be discussed this next legislative session, so the. Um refunding of the existing local revitalization financing tool is something that the Association of Washington Cities will be talking about. That is a program that allows the use of sales tax authority, it's it's a tax increment finance um mechanism. Uh that is based upon sales tax, the second one, tax increment financing is a property tax and sales tax based. Um mechanism that AWC will also be leading the charge on, and the basic idea here is to give cities tools. Where um you receive funding um fro- at the front end from the state. Um with LRF, it is a grant program, it's a competitive grant program run by Department of Commerce. That you then are able to use for infrastructure that encourages economic development within your city. Or within the area that you designate within your city, the additional tax base that that raises from the project. Is then used to pay back essentially the initial infrastructure investment. Um tax increment financing requires a constitutional amendment. Uh the reason that this AWC is pushing hard on tax increment financing this next session is because this former Speaker of the House always. Very much uh disliked tax increment financing, and with the new speaker, there's the hope that maybe there's the political path forward. For cities to have this tool like they do in some other states. Um my sense really is that the refunding of the local revitalization financing program is a little bit more of a fallback. But the basic idea is that AWC is putting forward some ideas to encourage economic development tools for cities, and we wanna be supportive of that. The.
Mr. Money?
Thank you, I I in the past, Senator Brown has taken lead in some of that, is she intending to take lead at this again?
Um I don't know specifically the answer to that, I know that AWC has been having conversations with her on that. Um the last I had heard, she had run a bill last year that was um based on the LRF model. But my uh impression is that there are some changes that the association would like to see, and last I heard, they were in discussions about that, so. I think that's a possibility, but I don't know.
The other thing I'd say is um on this one, when we're looking at, um this kind of focuses specifically on the Broadmoor region, which obviously we know is going to be kind of. One of the next big economic drivers for for Pasco and a real focal point of the community. Um but I was I was also wondering if the um the Port of Pasco's effort down at the uh their marine terminal site. Um needs an entire, it's basically brownfield development, it needs entire new infrastructure there in terms of roads and others. Um and um I'd be interested to see if that would be another candidate project for something like that. Uh because if we can get the Port of Pasco also letting their voice to this, that the 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 more voices, the better in terms of trying to get some work done.
Right, right, for sure. Specifically, if you uh end up seeing a grant based, competitive grant based program, having partners like that, similar to your question, council member. Having more partners like that is only gonna be helpful, yeah. The point oh nine sales tax credit, uh this is a existing program, it is operated by counties. Um they collect, um it's a credit against the state sales tax, so it doesn't increase the tax in your area, Franklin County does utilize this right now. Um it is used by counties for economic development, specifically for infrastructure program pro- projects. Um and the program is going to sunset sometime in the next five or so years. And the reason I say five or so years is it depends on when the jurisdiction started imposing the original program. Counties across the state, the Washington Economic Development Association are going to be asking the legislature to reauthorize this program. Um it has been, uh cities and ports are oftentimes the recipients of those grant funds for specific projects. So it is beneficial for cities and ports and other entities that wanna do economic development, um we encourage you to support that effort. Uh and then finally, um local control, the umbrella statement about we will um stand up. For uh in opposition to the legislature whenever they try and strip local control away from your local decision making. So those are the items for the legislative agenda. We um included, and I hope everybody has the support opposed list that were, okay, good. Um I'm not gonna go through those unless you have specifically want me to or have questions about that, we do have some carryover items. Well, most of them are carryover items, including remove um policy statement about the Lower Snake River dams and supporting them continuing to be there, not being removed. Um. We talked about this earlier, if you have questions, let me know.
Yeah, just um two two questions for you, um one question is on affordable housing, we know that one of the. One of the items that passed this last year that I think has a um a dubious impact um is the lifting of the levy lid um for the school districts. Well, that's not strictly a, uh that's not a legislative matter for the city, it is certainly an impact to property taxes and ultimately affordable housing. Um is that something you recommend we take any sort of stance on, or just keep our nose out of that one?
I guess off the top of my head, I would say probably keeping a lower profile on that, you know, it gets you right in the middle. With your school districts, with the legislature on an issue that I I I actually agree with and like your connection to affordable housing. I hadn't quite heard that before, but I think that is essentially right. Um the legislature has a lot of work to do on this, we know that, the one area that it does oh uh intersect directly. And I'm not sure what the city of Pasco would wanna do is the one percent local property tax cap on revenue growth. And I know that is something that cities and counties across the state will be asking the legislature to address. If they exempt themselves again from it as they needed to this last time, so um I can't see a direct. Uh win for the city and weighing in on what's gonna otherwise be a pretty messy and difficult issue.
Thank you, um my my other question is in specifically regarding to the uh law law enforcement uh academy.
Yeah.
Um I believe last session, um they opened approximately doubled the number of classes per year, um. Something on those lines, it was a significant increase.
Yeah.
Uh I think in line with what our ask was this last year in support of the, I think the AWC was was had a strong sense of that. Um in this case, it 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 indicates here that um increased funding is something that we support. Um is there a specific level of additional funding we're looking for for that?
Yes, a good question, um we did, I was, you caught me there thinking about whether it doubled, it was a significant increase, we have nineteen uh slots per year now, right? Um so um the question right now is, we thought that the. Funding that we received last year for this program that we did advocate for was sufficient to get rid of the backlog at the Criminal Justice Training Center. They have come forward in the interim suggesting that that was not sufficient, and that they intend to come forward with an additional budgetary request. I know the AWC and other jurisdictions are weighing carefully whether or not they want to go back to the legislature and ask for funding again. After just having received funding, um I would advise you to tread very carefully on this one. Because I think uh the legislature will likely have a reaction of, we thought we just solved this problem. And um why didn't you have your numbers right the first time? Um so we're going to wanna be a little bit careful on this, we support that, we wanna make sure our officers can get through in a timely manner, it's important, we recognize that. But um maybe not politically the best move at this point.
It's because currently it's listed as increase, it's support, Pasco is supporting increased funding, and I want to understand how to how how we should approach that and whether that's um. I was I was surprised to see that on the list, and thank you for the additional clarity as to why it's there.
Yeah, and I think it's probably more of something that's been a longstanding issue for us to make sure that there is um recognition that that's an important issue for the city. Um I guess rest assured that if it remained, we can change this if you'd like to, that would be easy to do, but also if it stays in this manner. We will not be rushing headlong into this issue without some conversations about how to do that, just because it says so on the document. So I would be happy. So I would be happy to answer any more questions here. I specifically, on my slide here, put Brianna's name uh for you to ask questions to, if you have them in the future. You all obviously know Brianna well and have worked with her in the past, and just um letting you all know that we are gonna shuffle a little bit here, and Brianna is going to retake the lead for the City of Pasco going forward this session. So no um slight on my half at all, I will still bring up, be around, and Brianna and I work very closely together. So you'll still be getting some of my attention too, particularly when you're in town. But we just had to reshuffle clients, we had a staff member leave uh this summer, and just uh that's the way that we've worked it out. So she's excited to work with you, has always loved it, and, and um, I enjoyed my time with you, it's certainly not over by any extent. But she will be your lead going forward. I'm really here in her stead tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I sure appreciate what you guys do over there. Uh, I got to see firsthand uh how effective you are and um, how, how we get our investment in return. And I appreciate you guys' help over there. I would encourage anybody who hasn't been to a legislative session to find out what your interests are, and then, and then go visit and, and see how it all works. It's unbelievable, and to see these guys in action, they have to sit through meetings. I, I don't, I, I wouldn't wanna get paid to do that kinda stuff, but uh, but anyway, thank you very much, and uh, and appreciate your efforts and, you know, see what we can get.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um, Ms. Reese, it's been a pleasure to work with you for um, pretty closely over, especially last session. Um, and we were able to get some pretty monumental efforts over the, over the hump there, that was um, that was a heavy lift and took a lot, I think, out of us personally, as well as uh, um, and, but it got done. And so, you know, I really wanna, you know, personally extend my thanks um, that for, for all the support you've given me at helping, helping bring our agenda forward and then effectively implement it. We had some good wins last year, and we expect to continue having good wins, so look forward to seeing you up in Olympia, I'm sure I'll, I'll be there again this uh, this coming uh winter and into the session.
Yeah, absolutely, I appreciate that, and just, you know, the relationships that we forged last session not going away. If you wanna pick up the phone and give me a call, happy to do that. And I would feel a little guilty about this, but I know that you're in such good hands with Brianna, and so you'll, you'll be in good shape.
And don't go around yet, Eric, cause Mr. Zabel's also got some thoughts.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, a couple of things, so, you know, from the discussion tonight, on the economic development tools um bullet, I kinda felt, and we can go back and kinda soften that specific location a little bit. Uh, we have the sixty-five acres for uh Broadmoors, pretty precise, I don't know that we need to necessarily be that precise in the legislative agenda. The Balia piece, I think we can make that a little fuzzier too, maybe it's uh supports adequate funding of, you know, rather than increased funding. So it's not so specific, but I, probably the bigger question I had, the mental health sales tax uh item, I'd, I'd love to hear some council feedback on that. I think council's pretty aware, just from what you've seen, what you've heard from your constituents, uh, some of the things that uh the public's dealing with, and certainly from uh law enforcement and, and our fire uh paramedic professionals, what we're dealing with out there. Uh, we felt it was worth putting on the agenda for tonight for some discussion among council. Uh, maybe a little bit ahead of its time, but uh, would like some feedback from council on that, whether or not we'd wanna see that in this agenda, or evaluate a little bit further, and brought on a future agenda.
Well, let me lead, lead off here, just cause I was thinking about that just a little bit, and we're of course in a our, I think our city and our county is uh particularly tax-sensitive, so one shouldn't just go into that without a, a very good reason. What I've observed over the past few years, especially with programs like Hotspotters and the dedicated attention that the city has been putting since we're eighty-plus percent of the county, uh, that we are experiencing uh things probably most directly and have things filtered a little bit through the c- the county, I think that's a fair question of whether or not we would be uh in a better position to make sure that, to use resources effectively. And so I'm, I'm interested in that, tread carefully, I think uh would be my suggestion, I wouldn't shy away from it. Uh, but also know that there's a certain sensitivity there, and we do have, and, and if it could also be uh, uh, brought up in terms of possibly working with county, uh even, even better. And that, I know there is a lot of dynamics there, but we can't not look at what's coming, incoming more and more as an issue. So I personally think we should wade into that as a con- at least conversation and discussion. Other thoughts, Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious about what the uh possible uses for this uh kind of funding, if we were to implement a tax like this.
It's, it's fairly broad, it needs to be used for um, for mental health services. It, it can be used for chemical dependency as well, um, it can be used for housing-related projects that are associated with that. You know, with a little additional research, you could probably find out what other types of projects other jurisdictions have used. It has been an ex- a very widely used tax across the state. And um, there's a good amount of information on there, so it is well-understood in, in a good part of the rest of the state, and that's all available.
If you don't mind, Mr. Alvarado, asking also that Mr. Zabel or, or uh Chief Roski or, or, or Fire Department through our different programs and those efforts, would, would, would we be able to effectively utilize those resources if, if we were to have them?
I think some, some of those resources certainly would be, I know uh, we just, we just added by crook or hooker crook, I guess, legally, but, but a part-time nav- mental health navigator, resource navigator on the fire uh, uh, emergency medical services side for assistance in this area, though those are with city dollars. But we feel that uh the return on that's gonna save us dollars in our ambulance utility. So, so it makes sense to do it, but uh, hotspotters, right now, it's, it's very ad hoc, we don't really have, I mean, the staff support is literally at the director level, and, or, or uh senior command staff uh that are involved, and so, you know, some of that effort could probably be better coordinated with uh, maybe a lower level professional that's working on it. And then we also have dozens of community partners we're out there working with, and, you know, we, we don't have a structure that we would point to right now, I think that would be uh part of the effort in, uh, you know, if council were to be interested in this and we were to pursue it, uh, next piece would be to put a program together uh before it was implemented to identify what we're gonna do with those dollars. I mean, it's a half a million dollars, that's a considerable amount, um, need out there is probably greater, at least right now.
And that's, that's what I was, the need, the need is there. Mister, uh, I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
Oh, no, I, I, I guess my, my main assertion is that I, I, I love to have a conversation about this with council. I'd be interested in just learning more and having this conversation.
Thank you, and, and I, I think that the, all the points that have been made are, are valid. Um, but I will say one thing that you kinda said slightly under the radar, Josh, was that uh we need to recognize that if we're going to move forward, uh, having an exploratory conversation certainly has value. But if we go beyond that, um, the legislature will expect that we use this like a tax that we're potentially asking the citizens to in- impose on themselves through the P F D bill. That means potentially up to point three percent sales tax increase. So we need to really weigh those out. That said, again, there's a difference of a council manic versus a kind of a self-imposed voted tax. We need to recognize that, our messaging and strategy, if we move forward, needs to be very clear on this. Um, especially if we do essentially impose the tenth of a percent sales tax. But having the exploratory conversations to see what the need is, and, and I like the, the thoughts that you had, uh, Mr. Mayor about actually working with the county and saying, hey, look, you guys have this authority, are, are you willing to exercise it? So we don't have to spend our resources and your time, or I guess Brianna's now, um, up on the hill. Um, can we focus our efforts elf- elsewhere? So I think that's probably step one, that maybe goes in tandem with having staff spend some time looking at what the programs are. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I echo a lot of what Mr. Serrano said there, um, and, and certainly um, your measured approach, uh, Mr. Mayor. I see this as being one of those things that, um, obviously we are spending more than this amount of, of revenue on these programs with our current existing staff, only we're funding it out of the general fund. I don't think there's any, any question at this point in time that the amount of, of firefighter and police officer time spent on providing these services is probably greater than, than half a million dollars a year today. But I'm not positive that I am ready to support the lift that it would take to take to this state and move forward this right now. This is brand new in front of us, at least brand new in front of me, I maybe, I may have missed something. Um, and I would, I'd be very interested in having a further conversation with the uh next council, um, at our, at our retreat and understanding better what the position the council would like to take on that, prior to, in pretty quick succession, going and starting to advocate for this in Olympia. So I'm supportive of making sure that we have the resources we need um to, to address these issues. But I don't wanna rush head lo- headlong into this one because it's so contentious for a variety of reasons and is an impact to the community um in a variety of different ways. So that's, that's kind of where I stand at this point in time, thank you.
Ms. Braz.
And just, I'd just like to support, thinking my heart, just like to support what everybody's already saying. We, this is definitely a topic that needs to be further researched. We acknowledge also the fact that our uh police officers, our fire department and our behavioral, behavioral services are out there, and they need the help, they need the funding. And so further exploration into this would be very beneficial to our current programs. Thank you.
Mister Zabel, I think you were eliciting some conversation, hopefully this is helpful, I'm not sure we put a cherry on it that's perfect to that we have a perfect thing, but I think there's, it's fair to say there's interest, I think there is also some sensitivity. Uh, uh, whether or not doing this legislative session, but if there's a venue uh to talk about also, you're gonna have a new council member seated at the beginning of the year, too, might have an opinion on it as well. Uh, uh, is that, is that helpful to?
Oh, we have great direction, thank you.
Okay, so that's gonna, I think that's gonna be a thing we're gonna talk about, and if there's something, some, some partial or preparatory thing at the very least that uh, maybe it doesn't, uh, it, it still is in, in our legislative priority list in, in some fashion. And I appreciate Mister Zabel pressing us to ask this question a bit. Is that, is that also helpful, Mr. Rice?
Yes, very much so. If I might just quickly add as well, and nobody asked the question, but since we're talking about it, one thing to keep in, keep in mind as you are thinking about your strategy, is that the existing authority does have non-suppliant language. So were you to uh receive the authority, impose the new tax, any resources that you are currently providing for these types of services, you would have to maintain that existing level of service. So that very well could be a conversation that you have with the county to see, I mean strategically for the community, it might make more sense for you to have this authority, assuming the county is putting more into these services than you are, but maybe not, so anyway, just one additional thought on this authority.
Uh, and I just one uh comment for myself too, so I'm coming the end of sixteen years of service and got to meet Brianna uh ver- fairly early in that process, and it was a big question for City of Pasco whether or not to expend the money on lobbyists, no other way around, put that in. Over the years, the, what I've learned from your profession, you're doing your best, and the best for your clients when you're as, as as an onsite educator, uh, to help the process, to for people to understand other people's perspectives. And uh, G T H has done that very well, including you, and I appreciate your service. And as pointed out too, you're gonna get a new uh person, Brianna's gonna get a new person, assuming, let's see, I think it's uh A W C conference is at the end of January, and I'll assume a variety of council members will wanna go to that. Uh, so we'll look forward to uh seeing your firm and uh, uh, at the beginning of, at the end of January. And, and then there's also uh, 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 Mr. Maloney pointed out too, I think I've also seen over the years, council members also go over because it's on their agendas as well. So being, having this prior legislative priorities list as the, the uh menu to, that we all work from is, I think, very helpful. So uh, where, where we get this adjusted, we can adopt it here before the end of the year, and realize that we can also update it as, as the legislative session goes on. So thank you again for your help.
And thank you, and I will look forward to seeing you all at A W C, and Mr. Mayor, I will um, be sorry not to see you. Um, it was very, uh, very fun working with you, I enjoyed it very much, and thank you for the high praise. We do try to um, we look at our work a little bit as public service, working for municipalities, and trying to make sure there is an educational component. So thank you very much for the kind words, and look forward to seeing you all again soon.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, we go to the next item on the agenda, related to creation of an Arts and Culture Commission. I will, item we've talked about at a workshop before, come back to council, Mister Zabel.
Thank you again, Mayor, uh, just a few uh changes we made based on the discussion uh on your October twenty-eighth workshop. Uh, the name, for instance, you might have noticed, Arts and Culture Commissioner, rather than arts. Uh, membership recommendations, uh, we did preserve the seven-member commission based on council input, but we uh heard the council on providing more opportunity for uh young adult participation. So staff recommendations uh include the professional membership of three to four positions for professional membership and expand that eligibility to include individuals enrolled in higher education art programs. Uh, some discussion was also on, uh, had on the adjective working artist, and I think the working piece has been removed. Uh, I think there's some subjectivity in what that definition might mean, and rather than having to define it someplace. Uh, increase um in adding uh, the artist came, came at the expense of uh uh, one of the community membership uh seats, so there's now one proposed rather than two as there was before. And then the expansion to youth member eligibility to students uh, kinda was uh defined a little bit as, as having a nexus to Pasco, the Pasco community uh, having enrolled in some regional program. So wanted to have a connection, I, I know there was some discussion about residency, and that's council certainly can do. We were trying to keep it a little more broad than that. And then under powers and duties, uh, uh, I think we added a little bit of clarity to vi- advise the council on code recommendations to enhance ar- arts and culture. And uh, with that, I think that kind of brings us to uh what changes were made based on the discussion. Our, our uh hope would be to get to a little more direction from council tonight, and then we'd bring this back to your next regular meeting uh, if it's ready for approval.
So to bake the cookies a little bit more, question, council, uh, is it ready, ready for us to consider adopting as a, as a resolution? Mr. Alvarado?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of just um questions, uh, may, may, maybe addressed perhaps more in the bylaws. Uh, but um, I'm assuming that we'll, we'll be having some uh very robusta um language about self-dealing, and if it's an artist and, you know, like how do, how do you, how do we not have folks who are in the committee being the artists that the work is being um, considered, and so I'm assuming that that will happen, but just wanted to make sure that that's the case. And then the second one is, um, folks who live and work, and uh, uh, also thinking about how that should be defined. Uh, is someone who does a part-time job in Pasco, is that, you know, is that enough? So I, 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 I would gather to say for, from, from my end, is some, someone who has a deep connections to Pasco, either they uh, they've been working here for some time, or something along those lines, rather than I have done some contracts in Pasco, therefore I um, so, you know, I just wouldn't want that language to be fuzzy.
But I think I can deal with one of those, because that, one of the usual things that I've been saying is, Mayor, when we do interviews of potential applicants for all our boards and commissions is, you have contracts with city or financial interest, and that would be applicable to this. And presumably, they would identify, you know, we, we, we go on honor that they, that they share that in it. Interest of, there is any potentials conflicts of interest, uh, we have another ordinance, I think, to deals specifically with that part of it. Other thoughts, Mister Zabel?
I, I did wanna just touch on the, on the residency piece, and of course, this is absolutely council purview. But I, I would note that your Historic Preservation Commission does not have residency requirements. Because some of those spots are really hard to fill in terms of uh the level of professionalism you need to, to do that. That may or may not be true in council's judgment on these seats, but I, I would just throw that out there.
Right, and I'd add too, that P D D A uh also is not necessarily exclusively Pasco residents. Through that process of when you have applicants that come to interview, that tends to work itself out, is my experience that we've had, not had a problem where Pasco's being overrun by external factors on different boards and commissions. There's, uh, their thoughts, Mister Maloney?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, I, I would ask, actually ask um, one, one change, um, we moved to four art professionals. Um, and certainly I think that um, I would rather see that at three and, and back to the one, to the two community members. Um, people who live in, who live and um, um, work here need to ha- have a very vested interest in the quality of, of community. And I think if we get too many folk, too much focused on um folks who are involved in the business of art, we may get away from the human aspect of, which, the real goal is, is to recruit, to help enhance the beauty and, and, and um, environment in which we live, and that's, I think, best served by a community member.
So, so your suggestion is professional membership specifically to three instead of three or four and then uh. Community membership back to two?
Yes.
Uh, council, any, I see a couple of nods. Mister Zabel, does that work or does that work?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion? So the question is, or yes, Mister Maloney?
Sorry, I, I, my apologies. I, I was gonna add one more thing. Um, I did um, um solicit some feedback from, from some. Art, some friends of mine who are in the art community, um, including, um, led by um, Devin Diaz, who's a director of a, of a. Uh, art gallery and um, we, we received a number of community feedback, um, all very encouraging. I don't think, o- other than. More and more money dedicated to, I don't think we heard anything that was surprising. People are very supportive of us moving forward on this. And I did not, and my perception and Mister Zabel, I'd, I'd love for you to weigh in as well. My perception was that there was simply encouragement. There was no. Here's a deal breaker for me in this.
Yeah, I, I was uh pretty impressed, uh, and I wanna thank Deputy Mayor for passing those on, uh. Uh, to me, it kinda gave me a little bit of insight as well from that arts community and uh. I think everyone that I saw that had made contact with uh Deputy Mayor uh. Was supportive and understanding of the need for a lot of different perspectives on the, on the commit, on the commission with regard to arts and culture. And which was, I, I, they, they recognized why we needed citizen folks. They recognized why, they, I mean, there might have been some opinions about. How many of which we need, but as far as understanding the need for those different perspectives, that was, that was evident. So pretty exciting.
Well, I'm hearing actually then moving forward with this, uh, Mister Zabel, the mo- slight modifications we made tonight, we'd be able to uh adopt. Potentially next week then if uh.
We'll have that on next week?
Okay, and I would just note too, then this will be rolled into the cycle of soliciting for volunteers. Uh, would be of course a new board coming up in the new year with the uh, uh, the new mayor and, and ratification by council. Uh, I would just suggest too that you, if you can't get the, the things to fit exactly, you do your best. In a reasonable, uh, you know, sometimes people might cover one or two different spots. Or if you need to end up modifying the language to get the magic fit, change it when you need to, cause it's a, uh, again, it's an advisory. Advisory group too, so you, you, you make it work. Thank you, everybody, and we're gonna put that on the agenda for next week. Great. Keep moving through. We go to item D, limited tax general obligation bond. Ms. Segal.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and evening council. Um, if council will recall, uh, you chose to take bank capacity. Uh, in uh two thousand eighteen for the tax year of two thousand nineteen. And that was mostly to, uh, which is property taxes and it was mostly to fund some major capital projects for the city. Like the fire station relocation for eh, station eighty-three and eighty-four, as well as a. A community center levy lowering, things like that. Uh, the total fund available for funding the debt service is about. One point eight million dollars a year just through that action. And um, we discussed issuing a bond, which would be your limited tax general obligation or L T G O bond. Uh, L T G O bond comes with a few requirements by I R S, um, and I'm going to go into two specifics because it'll impact us. In this issue, uh, which is that only ten percent of the funds can be used for taxable purposes. Uh, and that eighty-five percent of all funds need to be spent within three years of receipt of the bond proceeds. We still need to go through some significant and important steps for our community center project. Um, we need a. You know, community input feasibility study, uh, design, things like that to truly know the scope of the project. Uh, so for now, the community's center project is not eligible for this bond issue. Um, and so I just want to kind of point that out there since community center was one of the projects that we discussed previously. However, there's also animal control, uh, which is a shovel-ready project. And uh, we are recommending, even though we've not, we've discussed uh funding animal control through our REIT fund. Uh, we're recommending that instead of using those currently designated funds, we use the proceed uh of the bond to fund the animal shelter. And what will this do for us is that depending on the scope of the community center project. Uh, we will have some time to build our fund balance, uh, also save the money from animal control. Uh, facility, the currently designated funds, uh, take the sale of the senior center, about one point one million dollars that we. Have in our general fund and possibly be able to fund that project without having to issue another bond. So right now, we're looking at about twenty-two million dollars in, oh, I forgot another, another portion, which is the. Giza Stadium, uh, you had authorized two million dollars for improvement of the Giza Stadium. Uh, and that generally would be a taxable bond, uh, which would mean that it's a higher interest rate, uh, but it would also be. Considered a completely different issuance of bond, which also comes with its own issuance cost, which is. Um, the cost of drafting uh the paper, doing the, the ordinances, doing the due diligence. Uh, it's essentially like issuing another completely different set of bonds. Uh, we have an opportunity with, with this one L T G O bond of twenty-two million dollars. Which would be eighteen million dollars for the two fire stations, two million for animal control shelter. And two million dollars for the Giza Stadium improvements, uh, where essentially we can, we can wrap them up in one bond. Which would reduce our uh issuance cost, uh, but also the debt service for this, the two million dollars for the Giza Stadium would. Be uh significantly less because now it would be considered non-taxable versus taxable. So we've discussed the need for the fire stations um multiple times. Uh, and um, the fact that the Giza Stadium has already been approved by you in terms of its need. Um, so we are kinda coming to you with this package of uh twenty-two million dollars uh in issuance of. Uh, L T G O bonds and they would be funded by uh the bank capacity. Uh, that we utilized um last year and um the interest rates are historically low. Uh, last, and I'm not promising this, but last time we ran this, which was about a week ago, it was slightly higher than three percent. Uh, but we're looking at somewhere between three to three and a half and if nothing happens between now and then. We're still looking at below four, which is really good interest rate. So if council does not, if you have any questions, uh, my goal was to bring this back to you. Uh, in form of ordinance next week, uh, and what that would allow is. Um, that you would set some parameters uh for the bond itself, uh, since there are changing conditions. And um allow um staff to uh execute the bond later this year.
So we've got some higher ticket, six-figure items and even a seven-figure item coming up. Try to package uh to, to get a better rate. Uh, also the question I guess I'd have, and I did look, try and look through. We have a certain bond capacity that we would be limited to. If we added twenty-two million. At roughly speaking, what would we go to for, for that lim, for that limit?
We are nowhere close to it.
Nowhere close, but I mean.
I do not remember the exact number. Uh, I do remember last year, uh, when we, when I was presenting the property tax. I believe I had shown um the, the debt ratio and we're at the floor. Um, right now compared to uh in early nineties, the nineteen nineties, uh, when.
This would probably bump it up a few percent.
Few percent, yeah.
But not tens of percent towards, towards that limit. And I, that, that I think is important context because previous councils have very deliberately. Uh, worked a lot since the nineteen eighties uh to keep the uh, the, the debt capacity. Available in case that is needed in the city. And so this is a strategic uh choice uh with favorable interest rates. And manageable to re- uh repay very easy relative lift. We have the capacity, would have the capacity to pay this back.
That is correct.
Okay. Discussion? Um, silence on that one's moving forward and if I remember right, if we move forward, then you end up engaging in a process that is. Uh, has a bond council in a process where a bond is stroken, struck in a specific day and it. Comes to a head in which documents get signed, kinda like the city getting a, a house mortgage. It's a big event where a lot of signatures happen and. And the specific terms get nailed down. Is that, is that the next step?
That is correct. If a council uh decides to move forward, we're looking at a middle of December, December eleventh. Uh, is when we would actually do the uh sale of the bond and we also have our due diligence call uh scheduled with. The rating agency for in the next two weeks.
So question to move forward with that then. I see a lot of nods and so uh that then comes in. Into the form of you proceed forward and then that thing in the middle of December is the next thing happens, or do we need to do an ordinance?
There will be, there will be an ordinance next week for you to approve.
Okay, and then the follow-on is when the bond sale occurs in mid-December?
That is correct.
Okay. With that then, keep moving through. We're just hitting all sorts of different subjects tonight. We're gonna shift over to fireworks. Ordinances. Chief Roski.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Watkins, Council. Uh, this is our, we'll be approaching our second year since the fireworks. Uh, ordinance went into effect where we lifted the, lifted the ban and allowed the non-aerial fireworks in the city. And in July, we were back with, with a recap of what uh this past July had looked like. And then we left that meeting and have spent the last few months as staff with code enforcement in the fire department and legal. Uh, looking at best practices and alternatives for us going forward. So some of those that we would like to bring to your attention after uh our, our, our research and our analysis. From uh, from the, from the team that worked on this is that we move forward with some. Increased public awareness, uh, education and safety campaigns, uh, partner with the fire department and their, and their safety efforts. Um, we, we think that some proactive uh enforcement as far as. Uh, um, firework stands, when we have our firework stands out there, making sure that they're properly uh labeled with what's legal, what's not legal. And then of course, uh, having fire response uh prepared and ready and then the police department will come in behind that. Uh, with some uh enforcement. We did enforcement this last year. And uh, we won't really know the benefits of that until this year. We're not gonna wait for that. We'll have some additional enforcement. Out there again this year. Um, but I think our ultimate goal is to. Um, allow for the, the non-aerial fireworks, so people have the ability to celebrate the fourth. But yet in a safe manner and uh, and, and mitigate the aerial fireworks. So if we can saturate the market maybe with the uh, with the uh ground fireworks. Uh, allow people to have a good time, celebrate, um, we're probably still gonna end up with complaints. People aren't gonna like the noise. But from a safety standpoint, we're gonna feel confident that we're not having the aerials go up. I think the last piece that we had was a recommendation for some changes to the uh, to the city ordinance. Uh, with some uh housekeeping cleanups that the attorney had recommended. But then taking and increasing the number of permits that we could issue within the city. Again, going back to the concept that if we can get more legal fireworks. Um, uh, readily available to the public, um, they'll be less apt to leave and go. Um, other areas and bring back illegal fireworks. From an enforcement standpoint, maybe from a council standpoint, it certainly is uh, is easier uh for us to enforce those. When they can go right around the corner by illegal fireworks versus illegal fireworks. So you'll see those uh changes in um. In, in, in the council ordinance that's, that's in front of you as well as some of the recommendations in the council report.
Questions, discussion? Mister Maloney?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, thank you, Chief, for uh, for the update on this. Um. I, I have a couple of questions. Um, obviously, um, I know that targeting our enforcement will be a natural progression as we understand better how to. How to reach out to the folks who are maybe um using illegal fireworks and, and correct their actions. Um, but uh, let me ask some specific questions on the recommended changes to our ordinance. Um, first, um, we're talking about increasing the number from four to eight. Um. What is the purpose of lip, of putting the limit of eight or four originally as opposed to some other number or using a different mechanism for potentially? Um, I, I'm not sure I understand why the purpose of a cap is at all.
Sure, so the stands do require some attention from city staff. They require inspections. Um, and in our conversations with code enforcement and the fire inspector, uh. Doubling those, or, or making those stands doubling those to eight across the city. Potentially could challenge their ability to stay on top of inspections. So I think it was just our best stab. At getting out there and increasing the accessibility for the public, but yet still making it a manageable. Number that we can still get around and inspect.
Appreciate that. Um, and then the other question I had was, um, it looks like our um. Permitting fees, the lic- licensing fees were um in excess of what um state law allows. Uh, will we be, or have we already refunded those fees? Then anything in excess of what we had collected previously?
Might be a question for the attorney?
Certainly, I'm looking right at him.
I have no idea. Yeah, that's a good question, uh, because the uh, the. That's not technically true, so I'm not sure that we'll actually have to refund those. Uh, part of the, the problem with the way ours was. Uh, structured was that we sold licenses or permits uh per sales period. Uh, which you are allowed to do and you can't uh exceed one hundred dollars per sales period and we only had four. So the only refunding that would need to take place is if somebody um only had one licensing period or sales period and uh. They exceeded that amount, so uh, but we can certainly check into that, but no, I'm not aware of anything, but that's why we had to make that change was because. Uh, ours was uh, our, our sales periods were our license periods and that's not, uh, you, you, you can't do it that way.
Got it, just, just wanted, when I saw that the, the, the number would decrease, I just wanna make sure that we're making sure our community members are um remain whole. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Um, could it take it that we'll put that on the agenda for consideration as well and uh. Two, is we fundamentally shifted over from a no, no, no to a, let's see if we can do it reasonable. We're gonna. Still keep working through that process to try and refine and uh also reach out to our. Community to try and get them to use the ones that are legal and also then go after the ones that are pushing the envelope. So we'd also. We'll, we'll uh get ready for the uh Fourth of July, that's eight months from now. And any other discussion? Hearing none, we're gonna move on. We go on, we're again, difference, lots of different subjects tonight. We're gonna now talk about garbage. And basin disposal, uh, we need to do a uh rate review. Mister Zabel, I introductory comments?
Thank you, Mayor. And we do, we do have representatives of B D I here tonight, wanna chat with us a little bit. Before we get into that, for the benefit of the audience, B D I has been our uh basin disposal link, has been our uh contracted hauler. Uh, for residential commercial waste within the city for many, many years. Uh, the current agreement is a fifteen-year agreement uh that was negotiated back in. Twenty fifteen, so quite a few, quite a lot of life left in that agreement. Uh, it sets forth the terms uh for service and classifications and rates and with regard to rate adjustments as well. There's basically two uh components. You hear about them in a few minutes. Uh, there's a, an adjustment that's tied to the consumer price index. Which is a specific uh index as well as date, June to June is what you're gonna hear. And then there's other adjustments that can be made in this contract uh related to perhaps increase in tipping fees, disposal costs, those type of things. Uh, and so this agreement and what, what's being proposed tonight. Uh, excuse me, this agreement provides for a rate adjustment cap of five percent. So there's no year where the. Where the rate could go more than uh the five percent. So by letter, uh, August uh twentieth of this. Of this year, B D I informed the city that based on the terms of the agreement, they were requesting a four point zero eight percent rate. And that's a combination of, as I mentioned before, the C P I, uh, which is right now two point six, so it'd be eighty percent of that two point six plus. Uh, other impacts uh provided for in the agreement that they're allowed to recover through uh, through a rate increase. Uh, by example, uh, this would push a standard residential ninety-six gallon container from. Twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents per month, the current rate, to twenty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Uh, subsequent to B D I's letter, uh, council discussed it and uh, as council's been doing the last several cycles. Uh, they authorize a subcommittee consisting of a couple of council members. In this case, Mayor Watkins and Councilmember Alvarado. Worked with uh city staff, uh, committee met, uh, which included the, the mayor and, and uh. Council member along with myself, uh, finance and public works directors and our policy analyst. We met with B D I reps a couple of weeks ago. And kinda walked through their proposal and their calculations and per the rest that. Uh and per the rest, uh request of the committee, uh they'd asked the finance director to work directly with BDI, uh financial folks to, to kind of look at their accounting practices and uh and uh conformance with the agreement and uh what uh ca- cause, and what's embedded in the formulas used and cost allocations and so forth. And uh that has since occurred yeah, with a satisfactory result and based on that, uh the committee, I think, is, well, the committee hasn't found, but contingent upon that, which has now happened. Uh I think there's a, a sense that the committee feels the uh, the increase is consistent with the terms and conditions of the agreement. So with that, I'm gonna let uh our BDI folks kind of walk through. They have a pretty detailed presentation for us. Not as detailed as we heard at the committee, uh which was about an hour. But uh in about ten minutes, they'll walk, walk us through their.
We should've talked before, right?
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thank you very much for taking the time to wait for this very important presentation. Moving on.
And if you want to introduce yourself and your.
Yes, yes. My name is Dave Atwell. I am pricing manager for Basin Disposal. With me today is Jaime Diaz. He's our route manager and let's get started. Today, I'm gonna give a brief recap of what the recycling market is doing. We've come before council a few times to give some updates on recycling. Uh unfortunately, I don't have any good news for you, but there appears to be no more bad news, so we'll see where that one goes. Uh give a uh quick service recap, customer counts and uh tonnages and then get into the rate adjustment. So uh Basin Disposal has been serving Pasco for a really long time. Uh three generations of uh the Dietrich family have served the community. And um we hopefully continue, we'll get the opportunity to continue doing so. Uh the recycling recap, it's in twenty seventeen, China, China launched a program called um National Sword. And what its intent, the program's intent was to improve the quality of recyclable products being taken into China for remanufacturing. Within the recycled material that is being shipped overseas, essentially was a lot of garbage and they didn't wanna buy it anymore. In twenty eighteen, they limited contamination levels to be no more than a half of percent, which is fundamentally, uh our processing capabilities can't meet it. So that effectively stopped import of co-mingled recycled products. And then there was also a freeze on all scrap paper, essentially um wiping out a component of the recycle market. What that did is it created a saturation overseas. We tried to take our the co-mingled recycled product and move it into different markets. That has also been saturated and it has been effectively driving the cost of recycling through the roof. But what has happened relatively recently is that the industry's demand for this product really didn't go away. What they're doing is shifting the creation of the stock material from China, moving it back over into the States with the, and other places by creation, creating uh pulp mills. So essentially creating the raw product here and then shipping it back overseas. So this hopefully will start lubricating the market a little bit and start getting a more demand for our products.
And just cut to the chase too, do our current program of people wanting to deliver things to bins is still, would still be intact, where, where would continue to do.
Yes, we're still continuing with that. There's no change in the drop boxes.
So sta- status quo on the recycled market until we see a change in the.
Exactly. That's fundamental bottom line or no changes. Uh the the uh only small change, uh and we've actually probably not since I've last talked about with council, we have not changed the menu of materials. It's basically mixed paper, uh ones and twos, plastic, aluminum and tin cans. And ones and twos, what that means is um those are milk containers, soda containers, uh plastics where the neck is smaller than the body of the container. This is just a brief uh overview of the locations. And just a quick uh recap, here's, here's where it is. Uh this is the bottom line on co-mingled recycling right now. And that is uh it costs one hundred and seventy-five dollars per ton to recycle the co-mingled product and the disposal fee for Pasco right now for garbage is at fifty-six, fifty-two. So there's a very large disparity there. And it's always good to keep an eye on that one. Um cardboard is also right now, over the past couple of years, has dropped significantly in price and right now it's at zero, which means that we're able to uh for recycling, we just take it to the transfer station and they take it off our hands. Kind of a quick overview, last year's statistics, uh approximately nineteen hundred tons of cardboard was recycled in the community and of which of that approximately five hundred came from drop boxes and the rest of it were from front-end containers in, in the community.
Mr. Martinez?
Just a quick question.
Sure, sure.
The difference between the one seventy-five and the fifty-six, obviously it's cheaper to just throw it away, but we recycle anyway. Is that correct?
It's from a strict dollar standpoint, that's the gap right there.
Then is there, my question to you would be, is there uh some type of uh, of financial help being by the state or anything for that difference or they have nothing to do with this?
As that the state has nothing to do with it. Now, this is, these are market prices.
Thank you.
Uh let's see, one little bit uh with the um community recycling centers, uh drop boxes. Uh they collected approximately a hundred and fifty-five tons in co-mingled product last year. And that was uh about the same as in twenty eighteen, so it's been relatively flat. I think the uh, from a service standpoint, the uh the big highlight has always been with residential. Um it's a unlimited total collection. And what that means is if you're able to get it to the curb, we will pick it up. Uh we ask that the uh material be bagged box bundled if possible, put next to the cans, and if that is not possible to give us a call and we will help you determine what is the best way to get it out of your yard.
And if I could ask you to, we're gonna, we're gonna do have a busy meeting. If you could skip to the uh rate adjustments?
Absolutely. Let's go right to the end. Uh the uh rate adjustment is uh for CPI is uh two point oh eight percent. That's uh looking at the west side BC from the Consumer Price Index, June to June, which was two point six percent, discounted according to a contract by um point eight and that gets us to two percent. We also had a notice from uh Columbia Basin LLC that is the uh uh transfer station of a six percent increase. Um and once we apply the uh just uh apply the escalation to the disposal component of the rate, it comes up to be almost two percent uh additional increase. And altogether, these are, the, I'm sorry, the uh residential uh consumer will be uh going up about a dollar to uh from twenty fifty-eight to twenty-one forty-two.
And on the area that, you've got the codes on there and that's the ninety-six gallon can. You also have got, uh I believe in, you've got there if somebody has a particularly small can or an option for some of our more senior folks in their community, uh that's a.
It's the, it's the same rate.
Same rate, but it's a s- smaller, smaller increase.
Yes, sir. So it's the same general rate. Um this is questions?
Mr. Martinez?
Can you go back one slide, please? Did I see, uh so the, the additional, oh, it's additional card. What is additional price for an extra garbage can for residential?
It's uh, it will be at uh two dollars, twenty-one cents. So once you get your standard, standard service, your residential ninety-six, uh which will be at twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one forty-two, if you uh request an additional can, it's another two dollars, twenty-one cents.
I- is that increasing from where it is now?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Across.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay.
That's, that's still a pretty good, pretty good deal.
Yeah.
Right, second can, real great.
Matter of fact, I know some people wanna be anxious just so they can get cheaper garbage instead of garbage.
So in, in essence, this is a four point zero eight percent increase to be effective January first. This is one of those things that council will need to act on. Uh committees looked through it, staff looked through it. I'd also thank uh thank Ms. Igdel to bring her financial uh look through the routine and appreciate also Basin Disposal doing that. I think that's something this council should do every single year. It's an important process to go through. Uh Ba- Basin Disposal's provided great garbage service over the years and will, hopefully will continue to do so, but checking in to make sure that the, those formulas make sense, I think is important. Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Recognizing we're talking eighty-four cents uh increase, is, do we have any mechanism in place to protect the financially vulnerable folks? Whether it's fixed income or lower income? I don't know if that's where to direct that question, but is there anything in place for that?
I'm not aware of um BDI's policy, but at the city we do have uh senior programs where seniors in low income um situation do get reduced prices for water, sewer um services.
Yeah, and I, I, I was thinking of that. I was just curious if we've got anything, whether it's contractually or BDI has anything, let's call it out.
So, uh I'm not familiar with that particular clause in our co- contract, but generally speaking, when we talk about a a discount of any kind, uh we follow the city's lead on definition on who gets that discount. And happy to speak with staff about that.
Okay, thank you. I, I just, you know, if, if it's available, there, you know, obviously there are, there are certain folks that could utilize it and let's make it known.
Yeah, it's usually within our contract. The contract defines um what it is, but the the definition in the contract, we usually look to the city to give guidance.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you. And you're still offering, uh isn't it, you correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there like uh two vouchers for?
Two, two vouchers per year, per customer in, in the city.
Still, and that's, somebody, somebody has some yard debris and they come down and get a voucher from your central office so that they, then when they go to the transfer station, they can drop off a thousand pounds or so.
Uh I'm not sure what the, we love.
Thousand pounds. And which is great for folks doing yard, yard cleanup in the springs.
And, yes, definitely.
Okay. Any other thoughts? So four percent, a little bit more than inflation, uh demonstrated why there's a need for that. Uh any reason not, not to put that on the agenda for consideration? Again, thank you for your, for your long, uh family's long service uh and continued service. Uh 'cause this, this is one of those cases of where it isn't, it, it's a designated single source. It is, it doesn't make sense to have two gar- garbage companies fighting for business in this. So this is one of those reasons that you do, you want entity and as long as basin keeps providing a good value to customers. And I think the popularity of uh not limit on that trash is, 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 is helpful to to people as well. Uh keep providing us great value and we'll keep, keep contracting with you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Have a good evening.
With that, uh let's see, eight forty-four. Do we wanna, we got a few more items. Do we wanna take a five-minute break? Why don't we take a five-minute break? Eight forty-five. Let's come back at eight fifty. We'll be back in five minutes. And welcome back to the last three miles or so of the marathon. We go to item G, ambulance billing professional services contract. And who's presenting? Ms. Sigdel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, fire department's, uh, emergency management service is, uh, a really important part of our city's healthcare system. And by that function, we have many residents and non-residents who, uh, we could essentially, um, call them our patients. Um, and we bill them, um, for the services in the form of transport fee. Historically, the city has had a position dedicated to complete that function. Uh, and council is also aware of cities, um, city pursuing GMT funds, which is ground emergency medical transport program, uh, which is designated to provide additional funds to agencies who provide the type of service that our fire department does. And, uh, this, this program, GMT program, is to make up for the fact that Medicaid pays a very small portion of the actual transport fee, um, and, um, essentially it is to make us a little bit wholer than we have been in the past. Uh, in, so two thousand nineteen is the first year where the city has actually started seeing GMT reimbursements. Uh, we're still in the exploratory phase of it, uh, and getting new information as we go. Um, but we're the same, at least the good news is that all of the cities and agencies that are getting this fund are in the same place and we're exploring this together. With this money also comes a lot more scrutiny than what we've had in the past. Uh, our last Medicare Medicaid audit, uh, by CMS, um, was maybe twelve years ago. Uh, was the last time that I could track. With GMT, uh, funding coming into the city, this audit would be conducted every year. And with this audit, uh, essentially what it means is that they look through all of our billing and ensure that it meets all of the criterias for, uh, Medicaid billing. We have one position, we have, uh, high volume or increasing volume of billing and interactions with, with the patients. Uh, but also the biggest challenge with Medicare and Medicaid is to make sure that we're on top of the changing requirements. Uh, and so it requires a lot of training for one person and for this level of volume, um, i- if we were to truly train them up to the standards of a medical biller that would meet all of the require, not requirements, the scrutiny, um, of, uh, CMS. As we've been going through this process, uh, what we've found is that it is better at this point for the city, um, to go and partner with a subject matter expert, which in this case would be uh, Systems Design West. And what they would do is essentially, um, take over all of the billing functions for the ambulance services for the city. And what you'll find is that, um, how Systems Design bills all of the ambulance services is actually a flat amount per bill. Um, so as our, uh, billing increases, so will that cost. However, having this third party, who is a subject matter expert, on all of the requirements, uh, would be really beneficial and it would take the risk out of the city's hands, um, or at least be able to mitigate a lot of it. Uh, so we're recommending that we partner with Systems Design to, uh, bill all of city's uh, ambulance services in future.
And that ratio, uh, if we're, if this is potentially seventy-six K, how much are we receiving in GMT funds to offset that?
Uh, we are.
Approximately.
Approximately about, uh, six hundred to, we're looking at six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so somewhere in about, this is, so this fee is potentially ten percent range of the money, of, of the funds that we're receiving from the.
That is correct.
Questions, discussion? Ms. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Ms. Sigdel, for the, uh, presentation. Um, just, my, my quick question is, I see that the vendor is going to be producing the billing itself and actually billing, um, the patients directly. Um, will that go on city logo and, um, and, and information, so we'll, uh, letterhead, so it'll look like it's coming as a function of the city, or will this be truly another bill being received or another message received, yeah, by a third party?
Uh, it will be going with, uh, the information will go with city's informa- the letters will go out with city's information.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, to, um, to, uh, Mr. Watkins' point, um, this seems to make a lot of sense. Um, it's one of those things where it's just so hard to try to train your own special for something like this. I, I can certainly see how this makes a ton of sense, so I'm, I'm, I'm in support.
Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, just a curiosity, uh, uh, so, um, does it mean we, um, uh, we're, we're making these choices, uh, there's always, you know, the personnel and we have to think about, you know, realignment, uh, things like that. Is that something that the city's kind of considered as far as who's currently doing this? And how we, uh, move, move that around? I don't know if that's.
Uh, yes, the fire chief, uh, and the city manager have, uh, have discussed this. And I think some portions of it you'll see next week. Would that be fair to say, Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, changes always hard, so.
And GMT is a discretionary federal program, or is it, uh?
It is a federal fund, uh, that comes through the state, so it's more of a pass-through and it's managed by Healthcare Authority of Washington.
And, and I'm gonna support this, but I'm just, this is one of those that I lament a lot, that, this. We wonder how government gets more expensive and we're talking about basically paying ten percent so that we can get ninety percent. Combine this with, say, well-intended initiative to lower property tax rates to a limit of one percent. Yet we then end up spending money to evaluate impact fees. Uh, I think I called it the, uh, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll call it the, uh, GMT Employment Guarantee Act. And, or potentially, I think there's gonna probably be some hangovers from I ninety-seven, seventy-six. The net effect is, there, there's gonna be seventy-six gr- uh, grand a year paid to try and weasel out money from a system that is not rational public policy. So, I'm lamenting that as a, as a person not able to fix that, and we're not gonna fix that way. But, and so we're gonna vote for it, but, uh, just, just remind people that this is one of those things of how things get bigger and there gets to be more administrative staff. So, uh, for Pasco's purpose, though, it makes sense. So I, I, I get that, but still lament it. Any other thoughts? Okay, we're gonna put that on the agenda for action then, and thank you, Ms. Sigdel, for, uh, um, uh, making as efficient as possible. And with that, we move on to the Transportation System Master Plan, DKS contract. Mr. Worley?
Uh, actually, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, before you tonight, uh, in council, uh, is the professional services agreement for DKS associates. This is for, as you mentioned, the Transportation System Master Plan. Uh, and for those that, that maybe aren't, uh, a hundred percent, uh, uh, familiar with DKS, uh, you might know that, uh, DKS has worked with the city on several different plans, including multiple different private development, uh, TIA's or Transportation Improvement Analysis, uh, specific studies, uh, for example, the Broadmoor area from a transportation standpoint, as well as, uh, assistance in the Interstate One Eighty-Two feasibility study. Uh, so I think, uh, DKS has done a lot of work in the past and shown itself, uh, very reliable for the city. Uh, the reason why this, uh, Transportation System Master Plan contract has been brought to you is originally, this was allocated for a three hundred thousand dollar, uh, budget amount. Uh, the numbers have come back and were, uh, above that number and would like your consideration uh, for that, uh, modification.
Questions, discussion? Gonna let that one go on the agenda then. Thank you, Mr. Worley, and we go on to lift station. But, Mr. Ford, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I've been doing, I did that twice tonight. I didn't catch it the first time. I apologize, Mr. Ford.
Not a problem. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I would like to introduce this evening one of our, uh, newest engineers, uh, Neil Shirts. Neil is going to, uh, present the amendment for the HDR contract associated with the lift station projects.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me here. It's a privilege. Um, obviously a new face, uh, Dan didn't recruit me on the way over here. And I, I was brought in, uh, early August and now I'm here. And we're working on many different capital improvements, so I'm excited to be part of the city and join the team, uh, see things come to fruition. With that being said, uh, what's presented before council and the public tonight is a contract amendment with our consultant, HDR Engineering. And this is part of ongoing efforts that are outlined in the Capital Improvement Plan for, uh, the improvements to Road Thirty-Six, Pearl Street Lift Station, Ninth and Washington and South Maitland Lift Stations. Those four lift stations. Um, Amendment Three provides for additional efforts by our consultant to prepare plans and specifications for Ninth and Washington and South Maitland, as well as bidding and construction support. And I just wanted to clarify that these items in this Amendment Three were not included in the original agreement or the, uh, contract amendments that are attached to this agenda report. However, uh, we staff, we feel that the, this amendment accounts for the level of effort needed to buy our consultant through the completion of these lift station projects and recommend for your guys' approval. And if there's any questions, I'll open it up.
Uh, even though it's amendment still within the budget authority then, uh, to, to, to get the overall plan done?
It will be, uh, actually we have three hundred in the budget, I, my apologies. So we'll, we'll bring, uh, an amendment to you, uh, to increase that project to three fifty as part of your supplement.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Serrano and then Mr. Maloney?
Thank you. Um, I'll probably look to my right a little bit, but, um, with this being somewhat of a change in scope that wasn't necessarily contemplated, are we at any risk of any public bidding issues here?
Let, let me, let me back up my prior answer, then I'll answer that question if you don't mind. I, I have my projects confused, cause we, yeah. We, this is within budget. This is within our allocated budget, so not, not a surprise cost-wise. And then to answer the question, uh, of course, this is, this is engineering work. And when we contemplated this work initially, the, the initial contract, which was around that three hundred and thirty, three hundred and forty thousand dollar mark, uh, uh, much of that work was to evaluate the needs of those facilities. And so we have a qualified engineering firm onboard. We went through a selection process. We're pretty clear and it was pretty obvious that, uh, there would be future phases of work on these projects because their task was to evaluate alternatives and make a recommendation to, to staff and to the city. So, I think we're good on, to answer your question, I think we're, we're within the bounds of, uh, the law and we're within the bounds of, uh, how we typically operate on these type of contracts and industry standard.
Sounds good, as long as we're, you know, within that realm of somewhere related, I guess.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for your presentation and welcome aboard.
Yeah, my name's Neil Shirts, by the way.
It's a pleasure to meet you. Um.
You too.
And this is one of those where, um, I know that was a long time coming and I talked, uh, a number of times to, um, Mr. Ford and Mr. Worley about the fact that we, we seemed pretty short on, on resources and, um, so I, I was very excited to hear that they'd, uh, brought some folks on board, so and I'm glad to see you get in the groove of things. So, um, my question is, this looks like, this is a significant increase in the co- contracted scope. Um, and a lot of it, when I was looking through the scope of work, looked like project management type work, some, um, oversight of contractors, um, et cetera. So, I know we have a number of capital projects, um, a significant increase in capital projects over the next couple of years. Is this in- intended to help supplement our engineering team's efforts here? I, I, I know I'm, kinda put you on the spot here, so I'm also looking over to Mr. Zabel and Mr. Ford um, as to what exactly, th- this seems a, an expansive set of scope for an engineering term.
Yeah, we have, uh, continued to try to increase the efforts of the consultants, kind of moving forward to supplement the staff that we do have, uh, to try to spread those a little bit thinner where we can and make the most efficient use of those consultants. Uh, you know, I think the, there are a couple of different philosophies that can be, uh, looked at, but, uh, I believe that, uh, these consultants that we have brought on board are the most knowledgeable and they, uh, have a lot of skin in the game as you, if you would, uh, as they go through design, they go through evaluation, they often go through design. And then we try to solicit their efforts to make sure that that design, uh, is considered and, and the answer, we have those answers through the construction process itself.
Excellent. Um, like I said, I know we have a lot coming up, so I, I appreciate when we, when we can and when it makes sense to, uh, make sure we supplement our efforts, so, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so Amendment Number Three to HDR, we'll put that on the agenda for consideration. Nice to meet you, sir, and welcome to, uh, City Council. I appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, nice to meet you as well, and thank you.
And, uh, thank you again, Mr. Ford, for your patience. Uh, can, you're, you're, you're dialed in now, so. And with, with that, actually, I've got a question. We go to item J for General Fund Report. Uh, Ms. Sigdel stepped out. Is that something we're still gonna go through, Mr. Zabel?
Absolutely. So I did have a couple of, uh, items I wanted to mention on the gen- General Fund Report. As you, as you'll note, uh, revenues are pretty strong, sales tax in particular is very strong. Uh, I think the miscellaneous line item, something worth noting. And we'll talk about in our, uh, budget supplement later. That, which, it's, it's going in the right direction, very positive, but that's one-time money from the sale of a lot of different surplus properties we've been, uh, liquidating. As far as the expenditure side, uh, I think we're, we're within the bounds of, uh, a budget. I'll note the city manager's budget looks really good. And, uh, also note, though, the however, that we have, uh, uh, kind of some unexpected spending on overtime and, and police and fire, uh, for the tempo of work, uh, that they've been dealing with this. And I don't wanna get necessarily into details. We'll, we'll manage that within budget. We won't need a, we won't need an increase, uh, in supplement for that. Uh, mostly because we've managed it with other, other dollars within the general fund. And, um, uh, overall, a pretty good report. One other item, we've been talking about staff over for council to note, and it's just, I think, uh, one of those things, it's a sign of the times and it's under, I think, utility tax and it's the telephone tax. We have a tax on landlines. And not surprisingly, that tax keeps dropping every year, cause people are getting rid of landlines. And at one point in time, I think, uh, that was upwards of a couple million dollars for the city. Now we're, we're about the million dollar mark, so. Just, just something worth knowing and, you know, you know, there's, uh, we'll, we'll have a opportunity to discuss some of this, uh, next, uh, next year at the retreat, some of the trends we're seeing and, and give council some better insight into, into, uh, finan- financial analysis long ra- long-term for the city. Any questions?
I, I, I just note too, a big, big picture, we're, we're pretty much similar to what we, uh, projected as a plan for the year, where there's some optimism because returns are a little bit better and it's, so it's also then gonna set up in, into a sound financial position in the years coming forward too.
That's correct.
Questions or discussion? Appreciate the, uh, update. Uh, lots of coverage on workshop that council this, or workshop this evening. And we'll go to item five on the agenda, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel, any thoughts?
Uh, two items. One, I wanted to lead off with, uh, Captain, uh, Brent Cook's been promoted to deputy chief. Uh, should have seen a press release on that earlier today. We'll have a swearing-in ceremony November fourteenth at eleven hundred, eleven P M, or eleven A M. at the, uh, Police Community Services Building. And then, uh, I wanna note also, uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, Washington State Department of Commerce, uh, planning grant having to do with affordable housing, uh, a couple of months back, uh, wanted to alert council. The ci- city was awarded a forty-one thousand dollar grant, uh, to work through some of those efforts, uh, in, in amending our municipal code. Some of the things we'll be looking at, uh, as we, as we shared with you back then, uh, lot size averaging, uh, permitting duplexes and triplexes, uh, under certain conditions in, uh, residential zoning districts. And, uh, evaluating and potentially permitting accessory dwelling units, so. Those are some of the affordable housing options, uh, we'll be, we'll be working on with, uh, Planning Commission and ultimately City Council. That's all I had.
Questions? How about anything from council? Ms. Brahas?
Just a quick comment, Mayor. Uh, an honorable, honorable mention to the sixteen, I believe, uh, graduates from tonight's, uh, last Citizens Academy. Um, again, we have a community involved. And thanks again to, to the chief, to the fire depart- sorry, to the police department for putting that out.
Thank you, Ms. Brahas. Mr. Martinez?
Just one quick note. I didn't get a chance, uh, didn't think about it last week, but yesterday was Veterans Day. Wanted to thank all the veterans for all the service and, um, you know, we're proud to be Americans because of you. And I wanted to do that also in light of Mr. Ali Yanni. And I wanted to do that also in light of Mr. Al Yanni, he was our veteran on, on the council and there might have been more, but. I know Al was dedicated and, uh, appreciated everything he did and, and everybody, uh, that served in for our country, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. No other miscellaneous discussion, uh, now, is there a need for an executive session?
Not this evening.
Then with that, we'll go to the next item, we are adjourned, thank you all for coming.